Any good notes? It's not over.
Oh.
But.
All right.
I don't.
Welcome, everybody. And seven oh one, I'll call the meeting to order. Um, first, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, moving on. Uh, privilege of the floor, if we will be having a public hearing on the Sixty Jersey Hill property, so if you want to speak specifically to that, you can hold your comments to the public hearing. Privilege of the floor, you are welcome to speak on any open topic. Rhonda, go ahead.
Um, I had been mentioned at a previous meeting, um, book by Sarah Bronnen uh, called Key to the City, and I just wanted you to know that, uh, I had requested that from the Tompkins County Public Library, and they bought purchased the book and I checked it out and I did read it, and she goes into a lot of planning at various, um, cities and particularly on the eastern side of the country. Uh, places I had actually been to or lived in and, um, although it doesn't really, uh, deal a lot with rural areas, you might want to read the book since I returned it. To support the library and tell them thank you that they purchased the book for for people interested in planning, so I just thought I'd let you know.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Um, we can move on to approval of the minutes. I should have left it open. There was one, I can email it to you after. There was one sentence that it said Bergman's, and I think it was supposed to say co-bears to the fucking about the property. I'm pretty sure, so I'll text it to you later. I'll email it to you later if you want.
Okay, well, should we, you can make an amendment to, let me pull up the minutes. Um, might as well do it. Close down.
Maybe. Maybe halfway through talking.
So I'll just, I'll just share my screen just to make it a little easier. You made a look for Bergman, Bethel?
Yeah. I think I only heard like four times. Yeah. That was not supposed to say. I don't think you handed your survey.
No. Not if you want to be able to read it or make it look like something you don't want to try. So, um.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I think.
Anything else?
Nope. I don't have anybody else. Okay. All right. Um, seeing that, I'll make a motion for approval of the minute if anyone wants a second.
Second. Any discussion? Great. Uh, Bergman, yes. Holbert?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Scriber?
Yes.
Vanucci?
Stane.
And Maher?
Yes.
Great.
Okay.
Did you who, who motioned that sound?
I'll take a second.
Uh, except. Thanks.
All right. Do you have any town board report?
Hello. A topic came up at the town board meeting last night. And the board decided they wanted to get your input. Um, and it was whether or not to establish alternate planning board membership. Historically, I went through, I went through a lot of things looking at sort of the history and you know, why and what is, how it stands now, but, um, the upshot was, is everybody familiar with the possibility of having alternate memberships? In two thousand and seven, the board, um, the towns have to establish a law in order to have these positions, and the town, um, in two thousand and seven, the law said that the town board shall appoint two board members, or two alternate board members. Um, in two thousand and ten, the town board changed that to may, that the town board may appoint up to to alternate, so they could have had one or two. And at that time, it was mainly to serve if there was a conflict of interest. You know, to get things complicated, I wrote it when it says now. Well, anyway, um, now it says the town board, in in the new revision in two thousand and twenty-two, the town board may appoint two alternate members to substitute on an alternating basis in the event a regular member is unable to participate. So, and that would mean conflict of interest and illness, absence of more than a month, or otherwise disqualified. Now, there'd be two-year terms, uh, I didn't quite understood it as a a regular alternate member and an interim alternate member mentioned in this little paragraph. I think it's something we also have to just read like five times and to get a grasp on it, but, um, and those two will be serving on an alternate basis, alternating basis. I, I, anyway. The town board needs to decide whether or not to consider establishing uh, positions of planning board alternate members. I think the consideration would have to follow rewording of section one one oh five point three of the zoning law, um, which is specific to planning board alternates. And if the town board decides to establish the positions, I think, as we do with all positions, we'd need to advertise and and interview interested applicants. But, uh, now, if the planning board believes having alternates would be helpful with its functioning, we could start by looking at revising that section, and maybe it's something that the regulatory review group could take on. Um, I don't, it, it didn't look one of us. I mean, it looked like something simple, but I, I, I think it's really confusing the way it is. And if, if you're interested, we could, you know, it could be worded in different ways, you know, one or two, or you wouldn't have to have two anyway. But if you guys could like read through that section and and I don't know, maybe read up a little bit on alternate membership and see if it's something, it hasn't really come up. It's only come up once.
Just that one time recently, you were short on people.
Yeah, and I think it came up one other time, you know, five years ago, but, um, you know, it is a possibility.
If we put it on the agenda for next month and then decide, okay.
So, it's question, so when would they, would they need to be coming to all the meetings? Okay.
They'd be, I didn't read the whole thing, though. They'd need to, they'd have all, all powers and responsibilities of a regular member, training, attendance, and familiarity with any application that's in process. I don't know how that would work with alternating.
Right.
Yeah, that's it. It's making sense.
Anyway, yeah.
Because the thing is, the last time we had like someone couldn't get sick kind of last minute, so unless they were at the meeting because they were already here.
Right.
They're gonna come.
They'd, they'd need to attend.
Unless they saw those one or two people would come and sit all the meetings without.
They wouldn't be voting unless we had a shoulder agreement again.
I mean, some of that could be determined, you know, how much participation, um, the planning board. You know.
I like the idea. I would just say, because I know, at least in the past, we've had trouble like just recruiting people to be on the board, let alone an alternate, yeah. Like, who wants to meet somebody?
Yeah. Um. People who would want to come and sit through the meetings all the time without actually voting on anything unless we didn't have a forum, right?
I mean, if we think we have people, I mean, it's worth a shot, and if we have people that are interested, that's great.
But what, you know, what other towns do, and, you know.
My other question is, so if we decided to do this, but we didn't get people that wanted, that said they would do it, what happens?
Why don't they have the open decisions?
Yeah, anyway.
I mean, I think there, you know, there might be people interested.
Well, we, we've had an application for planning board alternate member, and since this, this has come out. Um, I don't know that the board would need to appoint two. I don't, I don't think there's any reason why they can't appoint one.
Well, just, I, I think, I mean, the way it's worded, you know, I mean, in the past, it said up to two.
Right.
Then now it says two.
So we should have to look at that, too?
Yeah, I would just, I think we should just look at when that, um, alter, you know, the alternating things.
Kind of stuff, never.
Go ahead.
Does, why don't, we have a presumably short meeting tonight. Why don't we just bat it around a little bit, this topic?
Okay.
For five minutes before we go back and read. So we can put it on the agenda for the end of this meeting if you want.
Yeah, I'll say, I'm, I'm an alternate member for Danfield Planning Board, and I go to every meeting, and it's very helpful for them, um, to just have an extra, I don't vote unless I'm, unless I need to. Um, but, uh, they and town board members there have said that it's very helpful just to have um, an extra person there, just kind of bounce ideas around, and that provides a fresh perspective. In my opinion, the more the merrier. And and that person isn't a voting member unless they, they have to be. Um, and depending on their, their experience, um, they could be a real asset.
But we try to revisit. Definitely next month if we don't get it to do, to get to it today. Thanks, Nelson. All right, development review, Sixty Jersey Hill Road. Um, I think Jacobson, you're not on anything else on the meeting. Do you want to say as a a mem, as a participant rather than a member, and then we'll just get through the list?
Perfect, all over there.
All right. Um, okay, so before we have, we can open a public hearing, we have to do this environmental significance. So, if we, and, uh, we, we have the.
What would you like?
Does anyone want to discuss anything about the property before we look at the short form? No, all right, let's take the short form. See, after this, we have to do this first before we can open it up.
So do you want to look at part one here?
Sure.
Pretty sure we looked at it a while ago, but, um, I think when this was first submitted. So, my red, I've added red Xs on here that there was some kind of missing information.
Okay.
So the description of the proposal is the subdivision of five acres off from the main lot. And this really is not legislative adoption of the plan. I'm just gonna sort of roll through this, but if there's anything.
Two, three, B, could be spelled out.
Like, physically disturbed. Right now it is zero. Yeah, we could, we could add that. So this is a permitted use under the zoning regulations subdivision. It's consistently be adopted, comprehensive plan. Um, especially with that clustering in the development area deserving half the land, and it deserves the open space. It consists of the predominant character of the existing built-in natural landscape. Yes, does not join the total environmental area. It will not increase traffic above present levels. Public transportation services are not available, and bicycle routes on near the side of the proposed action are not there. State energy code, it's, it's, it's a subdivision, so it's, it doesn't need to meet that. Same with the next two questions about existing water or wastewater utilities. Um, it does not, doesn't have any sort of historic, historic or archaeological, um, importance. It is, um, the adjacent thing that got checked here, what got checked, but the disturbance is not, it's not going to disturb it. That's, let's, let me just check something. Likely a stream or a pond, it's a kind of pretty high area. Might have been that pond that is comes up as a federal, well, but I can see. Yeah, so that is a regulated weapon. There's a, there's the pond, um, on the property that is right near the proposed lot, so that's why it got checked. Um, there's no regulations about sort of proximity to that pond. You can see, whereas agency has like a hundred-foot buffer. This seems like not. Um, for this one, I checked forest, because it also includes ag land, grass, and forest. It's not contain any species that are threatened or endangered, it's not enough floodplain. Subdivision won't create any point or non-point source water discharges. No impoundment of waters, moving on down to question nineteen. No solid waste management facility, and it's, it's like um, it's not then subject of remediation for hazardous waste. So with this, um, I prepared a part two. And and we can go through this, I'll, um, come in here. How I came to this is that everything is noted, small impact may occur, um, except the, the change in the user intensity of use of land. Um, I actually looked back at the, the the cluster development that was done for the two thirty six Russo Road property, and this is what was checked and accepted at the time is that um, because of the act of clustering development rights, it might just really, even if you know, those, it's never actually developed like that, just the prospect of sort of centering development. Um, it might change the, the intensity of use of land. And looking at the secret workbook, it kind of could have, it could have gone either way because development isn't planned at this time, but I just felt like to be safe to call it like that, and then in the description was stating that while the project will moderately change the use and intensity of the land, it will cluster the proposed five-acre lot and development rights and the remaining fifty-four acre property in a way that preserves more than fifty percent of the property's open space. The clustering of future homes closer to the road ensures that development impacts are minimal on the existing property. Infrastructure is limited, and then the large swath of open habitat and the remaining lands is preserved. And the draft resolution reflects that.
Would anyone like to make a motion on the draft resolution or have any discussion on the part two?
They're becoming secret.
Yeah, declaring lead agency.
Um, it's actually for determination, yeah, yeah.
Combined.
It looks like that the board had it in November, um, so we just kind of combined it. Oh, you're taking notes, aren't you? Yeah, I'll, I'll take the motion in a second.
Yeah.
You want to make a motion?
Yes.
Anyone like to second?
I will second.
Thank you.
Um, any discussion? Hey, Bergman?
Yes.
Holbert? Oh, yeah.
Not here.
Just checking. Colin?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Scriber?
Yes.
Vanucci?
Yes.
And Maher?
Yes. Okay.
In the public hearing?
Open the public hearing, yes. So if anyone would like to speak in regards to this project on public record, you may do so now. If you're sitting, either try to talk a little loudly so they can hear you on speaker or come up to the table if you're in the back so they can hear you when you're on. Go ahead. You're right.
Um, can you hear me if I sit down?
Good, you're good.
Can you hear, okay, yeah. I just, we live at eight twenty, uh, West King Road, which is right across the street from the property, and we moved in in two thousand and eight, we built a house there. So we have some familiarity with the immediate surroundings.
Would you just state your name?
Oh, Ross Horowitz, H O R O W I T Z. Um, so there are two, two points I want to make, which might help the committee uh, board make a decision. One has to do with quality of life, and that has to do with the road. Since they did a nice job on the paving of Sandbank Road, um, it's become much more used as a conduit between thirteen and ninety-six B, uh, both in terms of cars, various trucks, and the numerous delivery trucks. So, the question of having a road in an area that a couple of times a year gets dense fog, and at night is not all that clear, uh, would help if there was a yellow line down the middle and white lines on the shoulder so that the cars that have these facilities for staying in, in lane can see the white line. But this area between the top of Sandbank Road and Jersey Hill is a no man's land. The town of Danby can't do the lining, and Tompkins County says it's not their official responsibility. But I claim since this great increase in traffic because of what they did as a conduit between two places which are the county's responsibility, that the county should suddenly take on a commitment saying that if the planning board okay something with the development of yet more houses along this road, that the road should be made proper. So that's the, the first thing, the quality of life along that road. The second point might have a bearing on the environmental issues. Our well in two thousand and eight was the deepest well in Danby, four hundred and twenty feet, and it had to be fracked. Our neighbor at eight hundred, uh, dug four wells on our property to get water. So I went to a guy named Todd Miller at the USGS, uh, up on Warren Road up there, and he said the, our immediate area, the aquifers are small, ellipticular-shaped bodies, but he didn't know about the groundwater underneath all these little aquifers on top. And at the time of the, uh, uh, work against the fracking in our area, which we were heavily involved with, we got Todd to come down and do a big survey of the water distribution in, in Danby. And he didn't, as far as I know, he didn't work on the property that we're talking about in this consideration. So, basically, what I'm raising is a question that you guys might want to have an answer to, or at least be aware of the fact that you're moving ahead on something uh, that could create a serious problem for any more development of residential or commercial or both on that property. Uh, and it needs more information. I don't personally have a plus or minus on one way it goes, but I do realize in light of our experience and our neighbors' experience, and in light of Danby promoting itself as a place to build and, and welcoming to people to come here, that, uh, doing it right is part of the issue, so I just wanted to give you guys that as a heads up.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
My name is Karen Finney. I am at seven twenty-five West King. Um, so my property actually borders the open space, which I'm very happy about, but I too am concerned about the water. Um, our well was over two hundred feet and had to be fracked as well, and we have had some issues, and I'm just, you know, concerned about the lay of the land, and I don't know, I would, my question was how many houses will be built in this twenty acre, twenty-three acre cluster? What are we looking at, one house, five houses, twenty houses?
So currently, the proposal includes one house.
Just one?
Yes. They have the potential, as just generally speaking, um, if they were to continue development in the cluster zone, up to three more, so a total of four, right? Because it's fifty-eight total acres.
It's sixty acres.
Sixty acres, so a total of six.
Six houses?
Yeah.
In the twenty-three acre spot.
Those sixty.
But there's the thirty acre open space, so there's no houses on there. So that's less, the rest of it is twenty-three acres.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Which is a lot of wells being drilled, so I agree with you, you guys, we all like.
Well, it's a question. It's just, I think it's a serious question, and unfortunately, we don't have a good answer for it at the moment.
No.
That's the problem.
I mean, they have, the property has the development rights for ten acres, regardless if it clusters them on one spot, right? So we're not giving more rights in that sense.
Yeah.
Greg, do we ever, do we have even the legal authority to make judgments about well, well capacity or water capacity in our deliberations?
Yeah, but for site plan approval. Yeah, so, so in the zoning law, there are groundwater protection requirements.
I'm talking about wells, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, anything that requires a site plan approval, um, for any proposed use that will involve the withdrawal of groundwater from onsite wells and would eventually require the preparation and approval of a site plan under the provisions of this local law, the applicant must complete a groundwater data The applicant must complete a groundwater data statement and submit it to the town. You've got, in that you submit uh information for projected average daily demand from existing and proposed onsite wells. Calculations for estimating the average daily water demand must be included and be based upon established design standards and upon the maximum projected use. Average in any consecutive period. With the proposal for a house. That's a pretty minimal draw. So I I don't think it would prevent site plan approval for a house.
Can I ask you guys, what's the capacity of your wells? Roughly.
I don't know what you mean.
How many gallons per minute?
Oh, I don't know.
Do you have plenty of water? Can you water?
We've had issue after issue. We we had Nucolai in our well. Don't know how that happened. We had to get Giardia from it. We had to put a filter in.
We had a frac, we had to have our well frac. And if I remember correctly, it's like a tenth of a gallon a minute.
Okay.
And so we have about six hundred gallons standing in the pipe. So our projected use. Maximum is three hundred. So if we don't. So use a a lot of water. We have enough for. Multiple showers, multiple.
Yeah.
Yeah, so uh.
Can you water your lawn?
Yeah, well, we don't water the lawn.
You could.
We couldn't water the lawn, but it wouldn't leave it on a long time.
Right.
Uh when we've had, we've had a situation where we had a. A bathroom faucet uh on a toilet leak. And in a twenty four hour period, it took the well down to where it was turbid. And I was carrying drugs of water up for it.
Yeah, so they're not.
Until it settled. So.
Yeah.
It it's it's it's.
So you're not, you don't have a. I was just wondering, well, okay, but when you drilled those deep wells, per se, that. You know, if you got a ton of water once you got down there, that would be quite different. Than if you're not getting. A lot of water and it sounds like, like you're not. Now, you said six hundred in the. You mean, it couldn't be six. Does the, was there a lot of pressure and it came way up?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, that's interesting.
Pump is at the bottom.
Yeah.
So. But but it's it struck me as we're talking that probably the. Best quick thing to do would be to get a hold of a hydrologist. And have them look at the work that Todd Miller did to the area. And see if they can divine any sense based on the geology. As to what the underlying water table might be uh through through the rest of the area, not the little aquifers that we're dealing with in our land. Uh that probably would be the quickest way to get a handle on. Of what might be here. The danger with going too deep is you get uh saline water.
Right.
And uh. Our water has a methane content. I mean, we can't light a match on it, but it's measurable. So. The water, the the essence is it's a precarious situation and building. Houses which may be larger or fancier or whatever and have. Unlimited water use.
Right.
Uh may may not be a good way to promote what Danby wants to do. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Is that, but is that? The responsibility of this particular proposal, or is that? Something that would need to be looked at if people started to actually use the other lots?
Right, so this this is a subdivision request.
Right.
Um so right, it wouldn't, it's not necessarily looked at now.
Now, it would be that it would have to be looked at if people came and proposed if it was subdivided. And they were.
Site plan approval.
I would assume because generally, when they just submit for permit on a house. Regardless of if you had to do a subdivision or not, they would have to submit. Something or no.
Do they have enough water? Is that not true?
For stuff like, I don't know if you have to do for a while.
I think you would want to know that if I was.
If I, yeah, oh, yeah, definitely.
I just, I I don't, I guess I'm also, there's a lot of properties in the area that have holding tanks to deal with shallow wells too. I mean. I I just, when I think about Dambie in general, there's there's a lot of pockets that have shallow water people or. Not great wells or, you know, so I don't. And one, I would say I don't, I don't feel qualified to speak to you with, you know, and two, I don't, I don't wish to apply today, but. Uh those are just my thoughts there, so. You can get around some of these things by a holding tank sometimes. Not that it's ideal, I don't know.
All right, let's take a lot for a minute. Joel, do you want to speak?
Yes. What what disturbs me about this? Proposal. Um I I shared with you um to some degree at the last meeting. Is that the uh. I think that it's inconsistent with the intent of clustering. Um as it we, as we added it to the, when we did the rezoning. And that's an arguable point, but I'm going to argue the point. The 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 six hundred foot separation distance was an attempt to. To in, to preserve as much as possible the character of the, of the land. Um while allowing for for some. Um development. We we generally thought that lots, ten acres or larger, were sufficiently large that we could live with the consequences of their impact, even if the houses were close to the road. Uh because the lots is so big that they probably wouldn't be. You know, side by side along the road. Um and the six hundred foot uh rule wasn't, was intended to ensure that if there's going to be a, if the, if if the development rights are going to be clustered. That they would be far enough away. From existing buildings. And and frankly, from the road, that people wouldn't notice. You know, wouldn't have an impact on the character of of the area. Um and and in his uh letter to the board, Jake. Um talked about the, you know, the expense for for in, for just one lot of adding. You know, long driveways and and having, and large setbacks. Uh and and how that's a large expense for for somebody who wants to, you know, just buy a lot. And and build the house and and I absolutely can agree. And and that's, that's the whole, that was the whole point of allowing clustering in the first place is that if you, if you have a cluster of lots. You know, you would have shared access probably. Um you know, small lots setback in a cluster to minimize the overall impact on the, on the, on the, on the area. Uh and by sharing the infrastructure. Um you know, utilities, the uh the cost of putting in a road. Um you would be minimizing the impacts as opposed to having multiple driveways with houses that were not located that way. So I I don't think it's consistent with uh the intent. To, well, first of all, to do one lot, um clusters. I mean, that's something we need to address frankly, in 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 a different context than what you're dealing with, because you have to deal with the way things are, the the way they are. But I I do think it's inconsistent with 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 what we intended to accomplish by putting that. Six hundred foot um rule in there. Um even though. Um I don't like large lots as a, as a, and there ought to be a way, but there isn't currently, other than clustering. Um and I think, but I think it's a, it's it's a misuse of clustering to to do it, to use it in this way. Even though I'm totally in sympathy with the idea of having a smaller lot. Um if it were a ten acre lot, there'd be no question about the house being close to the road. Um it's only because of the, of the, of the, the rules only invoked because of it being a cluster. Where where the cluster was envisioned as being, you know, some distance away, so it just didn't, she couldn't, couldn't see the impact except for a driveway. So um you're in an awkward position here in 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 allowing for something which is, in my, in my mind, inconsistent with. It's not inconsistent with for that first lot. Um it's just the possibilities of what comes on down the road. Um and it could be a great, a great ways down the road, who knows? Um just my um thoughts on the matter. Thanks.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Catherine, were you trying to raise your hand?
Yes, I was, sorry, thanks. I I'm piggybacking on what Joel just said and I agree, and the original plan seemed much more um. Compatible with all of the above, the idea of having the road and having the the uh houses along. The back edge on that one side, and then when it came to this. I think the impact is a lot diff, more different and I I don't know. Um the problem, I think I'm feeling is that if it gets subdivided today. By your agreement. Then it can't go back to something that might be more affordable for people and might be easier for them to sell. And make lots in the future than to have several lots along the road. Um we have, we've had this discussion before about. The character of Danby and the alternate views of feelings about how people are about. Houses lining the roads and having the lots being directly like across from Ross and and. Uh Hyda and the other people along there would change that character tremendously. Whereas the original thought wouldn't. So I'm just throwing that in. I think that, I think the problem is. Is it possible to not subdivide this part yet?
Yeah, not subdivide the future.
Like not designate the developable area, is that what you're saying?
Right, subdivide the lot that that they would like to subdivide um to have the original house and I mean, I think. I thought the original plan was beyond that, the. Original farmhouse to add one house there and then have a potential for additional houses back further from that. Um if if you did the one house subdivision that is desirable now and left the big acreage. Under, unsubdivided, could it come back at another time and then be discussed? Um separately, and that way there might be a better idea about the water. I mean, I don't know how much water that factory uses either. Uh I hadn't forgotten about the water and I do know that um I do know some of the issues that Karen and Doc have had and. And we, I'd also know that their neighbors had to put, dig a new well recently. So anyway. Something to consider. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. Wanda, go ahead.
Um I was just going to say that I totally agree with Joel and I also um. Think that Catherine has made a good point about um H and E. And not knowing how much water they're consuming from the aquifer, so I. I think there are uh some reasons not to. To go with this particular plan. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the room care to speak? No. Anyone else online? Okay, I will close the public hearing. And then I'm open for board discussion.
Again. And there's probably other stuff, I was just, just as a reminder or whatever of last time, it was that. When to push stuff back to make it less from the road means you're putting it right over the. Area where you would be able to farm and do other stuff, agricultural and other stuff. So if you moved it all the way back, you'd be doing it right into the spot where that's exactly the type of open land we want to save. It seems a little, and I, it was within six hundred feet from the house. So, but it's almost like they're not allowed to. Put their house close to the road because somebody else has already put their house close to the road. Um I mean, I I get the rule character, but when you've got one side that's, that doesn't have that rule, kind of. Having the other side have it, I don't know that it makes a big difference. Either you're going to see houses on the side of the road or you're not. And you already are going to, so that does seem a little. I don't know, that. It it seems like that if 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 there was none on the other side or they were all back, you know, half an acre or something, so you couldn't see them, then. I could, I could see fighting that argument more, but the fact that it's already being done. It has been done, um. I don't know that it changes the character much one way or the other, so those are just kind of my first two remembering from last, last month, I guess.
I think, yeah, I think if that area was developed, it conforms with the neighborhood, but I also, I mean, again, not to like go back so much, but. If we did just look at his development rights and subdivide as being requested. Then we could kick the can for this whole. Thing down the road. I mean, I just, you know, there there are unknowns. We don't know what.
Yeah.
Who wants to do what with it, and that's what made this, I feel like it has made this one so difficult for us to.
So kind of just taking, sort of pulling that thread a little bit. Be concerned around the developable area and how that area's kind of changed, the locations, that seems to be the, a lot of causing some. You know, all the questions around this. Something I thought of, and I just spoke to Kelly about sort of before this meeting, is that, you know. The board could do what it did for that Nelson New property. And just. Forget about the developable area, forget about the open space area. And just assign credits to each of the lots. This kind of goes all the way back to the first conversation, because that, I think, was sort of the, the idea. You say. Zero, you know, no more credits for the five acre lot and you get. Uh, you know, uh, well, or for this bigger lot. And. It just, it it does kick the can down the road, but um. That 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 is, that is an option as a. You know, if you wanted to rework the resolution at hand. A strike language to talk about the developable area, you could just. Say that and leave it at that. That the 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 proposal right now, it's calling it a cluster subdivision, it's just has different. Future credits assigned to each parcel. And that, and then at the time that if ever that parcel came back in for a subdivision. That would be looked at as, you know, you have four credits, okay, you're using one, and then it'd be looked at again.
I agree with Joel. I think if we. See, I don't think that's a cluster development as it's defined in our ordinance, and the ordinance also has language. That says you can't use the cluster. Of option to kind of work around a true cluster. I think if somebody took us to court, if we called this a clustering. Situation, I think they'd have a good chance. Of winning. Now, I like the idea of credits. And I like this proposal. And I see it as, it's fine with me. As kind of an interim measure while we're sorting out exactly how we want to handle. Cluster developments, but um. I I I really think the. Credits. And cluster are two different things, as Caroline has. A credits plan for subdividing large lots. But that's not clustering, that's, that's a credit, and I don't think the two should be bonded.
And if we never put the word cluster to this, it would have made things a lot, it that it just complicates it, because we're not looking at, like, we're not looking at. Cluster development.
We don't really have credits per se, though, right?
There's nothing, there's nothing in our.
It's just kind of our conceptual tool we're using.
It's their development right of density, basically.
Yes.
Because again.
Kelly, did you?
Sorry, if he came to us to to request a ten acres, we would be done.
Right.
Right. Or even if he said five. Five acres and I'd like to go to the BCA. And I'd like you guys to, like the planning board to. Communicate with the BCA that we think it's a good idea, that might work too. Kelly, did you say there is such a thing as development rights in the ordinance?
Well, it's just the density, it's the allowable density of of the overall thing, like if they, it's just tearing through that ten acre.
Okay.
That's how we're getting at the six, it's just the ten acre division.
But but. Is there anything that? Is there anything that, other than clustering that goes beyond saying? It's ten acre subdivisions in rural one? Is there any language in there?
But what's in our staff analysis, you know, under festival, like the lessons of page one, the memo. It seems like stuff that's there.
This is on the end of. You know, actually, I like Greg's proposal, I like the whole thing. For this situation now, but. We need to figure out how we're gonna handle it down the road, I think.
Yeah, I guess, how does it not? Forty thousand right now.
Right, I, I, I think the six hundred feet distance is, I would say, an obstacle here for future development. But I also think it's, it's a obstacle for if we want to develop any like. I, I don't, I just think it's a. Heavy one, if we want to have conforming areas or. Smaller lots, so.
I mean, the required lot area for rural one states except when approved as a clustered subdivision. Lot area shall not, shall be not less than ten acres and a lot that is not less than eight acres. So except. And Jamie, to your question about what we use for credits or development rates, it, it does talk about, does say credits. So it does talk about subdivision rights and that. That remaining subdivision rights of the parent parcel need to be specifically transferred to the newly created lot.
Is that in the cluster ordinance or just?
No, it's in the regular ordinance.
So. Could you just read that again?
So it says. Let, let me just start with, it, it, there's three points here.
All right.
And they need to be all taken as a whole. So number of lots allowed on any parcel as it existed on the effective date of this local law, which was January fourth, twenty twenty. On any parcel, this effective date, there should, there shall be permitted no more than one lot created for every ten acres of land.
Okay.
The limitations of this section shall apply to parcels of land existing on the effective date. This amendment to this law, January fourth, twenty twenty two. Any subsequent owner or owners of such parcel of land, i.e. the parent parcel. Shall be bound by the actions of previous owners and that such subsequent owner or owners may only create. The number of lots that may remain of the original number allowed. Basically just a lot of wording, it's just saying that you're, you have one lot or ten acres. Further subdivision of any parcel created after, after this date shall be prohibited. Unless all or part of the remaining subdivision rights of the parent parcel are specifically transferred to the newly created lot. And if I'm not mistaken, a lot of this language was carried over from past zoning ordinances. But it was also supposed to set the town up for a transfer of development rights scenario, which it never actually carried through. So there is some language in the zoning that is like a nod to transfer development rights. But the town never actually set up that program. But this is what we had to work with.
So that, so that. Implies that's, I stand corrected somewhat, that implies. Kind of the credits thing, but it doesn't link it to clusters, is that correct? Yeah, so why not just do it? Why don't we proceed on this?
Well, he said, he said to subdivide smaller than ten acres, it has, you can only do it through.
So, so if. So let's say it's a hundred acre lot. It's a hundred acre lot and somebody just parcels off. Can they do, that they can't do, I, I don't get where the transfer. Of rights comes in, so let's say the, the first lot they parcel off is twenty acres. They have to do at least ten, right? Rural one, a hundred acre lot, they're not doing cluster, they've got to do at least ten.
At least ten what?
Acres.
Okay.
So let's say they do twenty, so now there's eighty acres left. Does the law say that there's, that you can put nine, you can, nine lots on that eighty acres? I didn't quite understand the.
Yeah, as long as the average density is, is at least ten acres per lot. Of the original parent parcel at the effective time of this law.
Can the first guy do five?
Oh, oh, five what? Acres or lot?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can the first person do five acres then? And leave ninety-five and then there's. There's nine credits.
Let's, this is so confusing, can we stick with this? This is already confusing.
Well, I think, Colleen, I really think this is important to get this down whole. Because I think it's gonna, for me, it's gonna relate to my deliberations and judgments on what we do with this. So, and we're close. So, so, so the, so the law is saying, can you summarize then? What that law is saying about subdivision of, say, a hundred acre lot?
It's, it's saying that you have to have, it, it's one lot created for every ten acres of one. So the density requirement there.
Right.
And. It, it applies to parts of land existing, you know, I think.
Right.
Further subdivision of any parcel is prohibited unless all or part of the remaining subdivision rights. Of that original parcel are transferred to a newly created lot.
I don't know what that means.
You, and somebody has to specifically say, kind of what the planning board is considering now about credits essentially. Is assigning. Rights and, and I don't think we have been doing this for every other subdivision and I don't think that it was done anyways for any other subdivision.
Okay. So the remaining lot, so if somebody, uh, uh, going back to the hundred acre lot again, if somebody parcel off. Forty, then there's still, then you transfer nine rights. To the, to the sixty acres left or. I don't see how it, how it works out, there would be other than just ten acre subdivisions.
You can, you can assign the rights however you wish. I think it only, yeah, you have to have a minimum of ten acres.
Right.
To create a lot.
Okay.
Once you go, but, once you create a lot that's below ten acres, it's automatically, it can't be approved as a conventional subdivision. You have to request a clustered subdivision approval. But if you're just, if you're creating a twenty and an eighty, that's still a conventional subdivision. You still are required by this law, but I don't think it's been enforced, is that you still should assign rights to those. To, to those parcels, so you could say that twenty acre parcel has no more rights left to subdivide and, and this other one has.
Okay, so if the first lot in this hundred, is my last question. The first lot in this hundred acre parcel is, is forty, is, it's carved off, is forty acres. So it says the, the term the remaining rights, is that, is that rights for six more lots or for nine more lots? No, it's very specific, like what do they mean exactly? What are the numbers?
The way I read it is that they can be, they can, I mean, it says transfer to the newly created lot. I don't see why they, they can't transfer them to the, to the.
Right. The sixty acre lots, newly acre, created lot.
I think the thing about these scenarios though is we would, we would be looking at that.
Would it be nine or six? That's a black and white question.
It doesn't have to be either.
I'm still confused about the nine though.
So there is ten original. Ten development rights, ten development rights in a hundred acre parcel.
Right, that's nine, I would say there's still nine left that can be.
Okay.
Assigned to either parcel. This one is saying to, to the new created lot, but even this is. I'm sorry to like, you know, this is the law and supposed to enforce, but. This is tricky because you're not just creating one lot, you're creating two lots, subdivision creates two lots. Even this language is extremely misleading.
It needs to be cleaned up, yeah, yeah.
So we, we need to come to a decision about today.
Yeah.
Now, what's gonna happen and what are we gonna do? There may well be further discussions because we have figured out that some of this stuff is pretty confusing. The way we have it written now and, but I, I, I am not personally in favor of doing this. Week after week or month after month after month for who is asking to do it or for. Our, our time. I think we need to make the best decision we can make today. That's my.
I mean, my understanding when, when first said this was that. The point was is that you have a spot, you, you want to have everything kind of clustered together in open fields, as much open land as possible. Hundred acres and you cut off a ten, you could, you know, you said five or six and they'd have a couple, you know, a house, one of the house or whatever on the other bigger property. I mean, the person, I mean, right now it's gonna be all in the same person, right? I mean, this isn't like splitting and selling off, so at this moment, he would own all the credits to put on either property, correct?
Correct, he could say, I want all the credits on that five acre lot and I'll, I'll do no credits.
Or split it up, right, so that's not our decision, especially not today, because that's what is in front of us, correct? We don't determine.
But the planning board would approve it, so you could say, we're not gonna approve zero and five or five and zero, I mean.
When it comes up, well, because someone has a proposal. I mean, we don't need to decide all of that now, because we also have, we don't know what people are gonna, you know, necessarily ask for.
Asked for any of the, to use the credits, or put them in the work, correct? All they're asking for is to divide the line.
Just one for that new five acre. That's all there is.
And so it does need to be acknowledged if, if, if the one five acre, that, that, it needs to be acknowledged that one of those credits has been taken from the parent lot.
Right, right.
But do we need to do more than that then?
You know, you, you really don't, and, and this is where I've said, come around full circle of this, is that. I take full responsibility for this six months of doing this because in my mind, what happened on Nelson Road wasn't enough. So it's a really call that truly a cluster subdivision. And so I encourage the planning board to look at creating, having an outlook and create a plan, this development area. Try to delineate where, think about it, where any future development could be and the planning board can respond to yes or no. But this seems to have just created more, had even more questions that are unnecessary. Residents think there's twenty houses going up down the road, I mean. So I'm almost, that's why I'm always inclined, I had a conversation with, with a, another resident yesterday about this and I, I sort of thought to myself. Why don't you just go back to, you know, just go back to just assigning credits. You're still up against that six hundred foot rule though, if you do, if, look, pretend this development area and open space area are just completely wiped off the map. And it's just a five acre lot and a fifty four acre lot. And you call that a cluster subdivision because you have to, because it's less than the required ten acres. You're still contending with the six hundred foot rule. So. That's up to the planning board to make that decision of, do you, do you maintain that six hundred foot rule? Do you reduce it by a certain amount, is there just other reason to reduce it by a certain amount? Do you want to kick that can to site and review? Remember, this is a zone district that any house has to go through site and review. So the new home that's gonna be proposed for the new lot would have to come back or.
Review.
Either way.
Review.
Yeah.
And, you know, you could then, that six hundred foot rule could then come into play then.
But we don't really have to decide that tonight.
You don't, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
I, I guess I just feel that without having, you know, proposals for house locations on the developable area. And the six hundred foot rule, I would rather we just focus on the five acre carve out and leave this all open as it is today. That's mine.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, we may or may not address it depending if it's.
For houses and not for a condominium group, what would be on each parcel? Is that clear to everybody or?
Nobody's asking.
Currently, there is no proposal, as part of this, all we are saying is that they're gonna separate a portion of the land from the other portion of the land. There's no development of what type of housing is being approved.
The zone doesn't allow that.
But yes, all of that, yeah.
Right, right now they just want to put one house.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Well, right now they want to subdivide, would be intended.
Yeah, and so it may never be different. They may decide they want to keep the way, the way it is.
Uh, this is, nobody's, well, everybody's, it's the. The law is very unclear, the cluster thing's unclear, that law's unclear. We're trying to do the best we can for Danby and for the, and for the. A lot owners and, you know, we just got thrown into this, you're trying to do the best you can, I think actually what a. Proposal's pretty good and hopefully our committee can, can clarify this, so we don't put a planning board through this again.
Alright, are we at the point, can I make a motion that we move ahead but strike the. But strike the. Developable area?
I guess, I. You can make a mo, you can make a, you can always make a motion anytime you want, is that a motion?
Yes, I'm making, I guess I just don't have the language yet, but.
And then we can edit it.
Might want to just take it, let me take a temperature check of like, where are people with that general idea?
Of making a motion or?
Subdivision, so just.
I don't know the language for it, but just, let's just focus on the five acres and not the future development.
And just, okay, and not having delineate the rest of the. You know, I think, well, you were asking, I think, you know, given that we're in this, we're, we're in limbo right now. Or purgatory, maybe it's more appropriate. I think it's a good idea to just do that and let our committee wrestle with clarifying these things down the road.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that, it's, makes a lot of sense to just go ahead there.
Okay, so what is the flip side of doing that?
So I guess, I guess it's.
I want to be clear what the flip side is.
Question would be, is that, so who does it come on front, so like, let's say he wants to build the house near the other one. On, on, on the five, like he, he's not talking about any other credits, he just wants to build the other house. Does it have to be the six hundred feet and, I mean, like, who, who would they come to if he's trying to get a variance for that? Or is he not able to, unless we do that now?
Yeah, so, yes, the, the, the board.
That the BCA?
No, the, the board can, as part of cluster subdivision, you can waive it now, you can modify it now. You could also wait till the site plan process, remember, any home has to go through site plan.
Right.
So that would be discussed at that time.
Yeah, now or then.
I mean, could.
What I'm doing now is just, I'm, I'm just drafting what I think, what I'm hearing from Colleen if she wants to make that motion. Not that it'll, yeah. You have an A fifteen deadline.
I know, sorry, like leaving you guys on the worst possible one.
I mean. This is the only way we have today, right?
Yes.
I propose, or this one, I don't know if I, if there's consensus on this, that we, that we let us. What's the word, to allow for the less than six hundred feet. I just, I, I'm, but again, I think there's a difference of opinion, we hear it, but I. I just, I, I'm, but again, I think there's a difference of opinion, we hear it, but I, I just think this is how we, my understanding when we did the zoning was to just protect all of this, and. So now we have all of that protected. Today, the town gets to know that all of that is not being developed today, you know, and he could go ten, 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 ten.
Right, and never come in front of us.
Yeah, so, or, or not in this way.
Not in this way, right, he wouldn't go through all this.
So I, I, I'm putting both of those things out there, will we just focus on this as it is?
I mean, I agree, I think with what you're saying is that.
Very clear.
Cause my, my, yeah, my thing was. Too, like, what all changes are gonna try to bring up and make in between, I, I mean. I, we looked at it, we discussed it, I thought we had some consensus last month talking about the. No, we don't want it to go six hundred feet back. A- again, and, and to me especially when, if there weren't neighbors across the street, it has to be six hundred house, six hundred from the next other house, so if the neighbors weren't across the street, or if they had to have their setbacks. It wouldn't have to be all the way into the park that you can actually use for agriculture, it could be close, they could both be kind of closer to the street, like halfway. But because they're built on the road, means this one's, it would have to be built in the middle of your agricultural land, and I just don't think that's a smart idea, I think.
No.
If it's clustered, they should be able to, to, to build it closer to the road and not in that area. This is.
Would, would waive the term, just waive the six hundred foot, would that work in your?
Yeah, it says like, applicant's requesting relief, I say ramp that relief of the minimum setback of six hundred feet.
Would that fit in your, what you're writing up now, Chris?
Yes.
It's either that or, or giving an, a dimension.
Seems hard. Yeah, so right now, as waves are requiring.
I'm okay with that, since that's what we'd originally been talking about.
And then we still, when he does set, set the house, he's coming before us again, right?
Yeah.
So if there was some, something outrageous between now and then, we can. Say that doesn't.
Yeah. Like if they tried to put it right on the property line, or directly across from another house, then we need to push back when they came for that.
With overhangs over the road and stuff like that, it's like, yeah, we're just not gonna let this. Well, at least one board member was smart enough not to sit through all this, not pass it out, they just go hide in the back, you know? Let us deal with it.
Um, do you want me to? I just, I just crossed out what I think you're trying to say, um.
Well, we did that loud, so we cannot hear that thing.
Yeah, so it would, it's, it's either you read everything out loud, I could also open this up on the.
Let's do that.
On the screen.
Okay.
And.
We don't wanna edit it on the.
No, I can, and, um.
So you're. You're suggesting take out the third. I wish these were numbered.
I know.
Whereas the owner proposes the cluster sub of developable right of the five fifty four point two property and.
That also, and then the last one's a little. Are we providing relief?
Okay.
Um. Right, so straight through in Garibon. The eight acre. Then straight from thirteen.
Um, twelve and thirteen, are those the ones?
I'm gonna count them, where everyone was, yes, that's the one, so. So that number. Although. For the four. One, 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 fifty percent. Well, and straight over there.
Anything else in the?
Yes, I, I wanna leave when we leave, but I don't know if that's ever gonna be included.
I'm sorry, what?
I wanna leave, then we leave. We made section six oh one, required one separation distance, six hundred feet.
Colin, right here though, is this part of your?
Yes, sorry, I thought. And then. Strike three resolve the up to four double units, and then the area, and then the next line resolve the open space area.
Can you sort of guide me through that a little bit, what you're?
Yes.
Thinking here, so.
So. Again, this is just referring again to the developable area, as we're doing in the plot, and since we're not, we're not referring to that area anymore, and we'll strike through. Resolve that up to four double units and all other uses, and we're striking that whole line, and then the next line, this is the open space area.
And does the plan, is, I mean, is this part of your motion, and, and not that, you know, this?
This is my motion, I don't know if everybody will, will second it or?
We'll have to find out who votes for it, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of. It should go, somebody should just propose something, and if there's amendments, it would be made during the discussion.
Um, so if we're gonna keep going under, whoop, section one A. And G, striking through both of those, because again, we're referring to.
We're not doing this development.
And then I think that's it.
But are, in, not that words in your mouth, just be thinking about the credits for each lot, with the platnotations. There'd be platnotations about credits for each lot.
Cause if we don't, does that mean there're not credits there?
Right, you, you know.
Well, he's, he's. How many credits are left, you know?
Suggestion?
Yes.
And we. Know that no less than one credit will be assigned to the five acre lot. And the total of. Six credits are available on the property.
The survey does show fifty nine acres.
Okay, so.
It's not a survey, but like, when you add up all the areas.
Okay.
Um, I, I would.
Those five.
Safely, I would say five, without variance. Um, you know, if, if there was a full survey and it showed that it was sixty, then I think it'd be safe to say that there's six, but. Um, without a full survey, there's just not. Just not.
Right. So should it say, still in the remaining area? Not to exceed four in total?
What if you just took out, instead of taking out all of one A, you just took out in the developable area? And left the dwellings attached and detached not to exceed. But it should be five.
That would concern.
Do we include?
There's already one there, isn't it?
Yeah.
That counts as one of them.
Well, one, but we're not subdividing here, so it's still four with. Cause one happens on.
Well, no, I think if it's fifty nine, then we only get five total.
And he's already got one house.
Right, but when it comes, so he really wants three left, but it's four still included. Right, he is what it comes to.
Yeah, yeah, I guess that's what I was wondering, is I don't know if you count just future development in that number.
You could, you could, you could use the language of the zoning law, which says subdivision rights, so you could.
Okay, okay, so it's saying not to exceed four in total.
Right, so four subdivision rights of the parent parcel. And no more subdivision rights of the smaller parcel.
Yeah.
Because it's already, it's being proposed to be settled, that it's using one of those credits.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So. Maybe the switch though is just to say in the remaining area, not, it's just the developable area instead. Or have you, I shouldn't, you just skipped.
So where you have B now. Leave it except for the indevelopable area, that's the, the very beginning of it.
The, the, because the developable area is, is just this, so it's not the whole parcel thing.
Right, right now, A and B are, is to link, it's like making a distinction between what can happen in each of those.
Right.
And so I think B needs to kind of go away if we're not.
Right, B goes away.
Still do need to acknowledge in those.
We wanna keep, we wanna keep this.
The parent parcel is not to exceed four in total.
And not that.
I, that's what I'm saying, too.
Uh, okay, so, so in the parent parcel, essentially.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um. So. See four in total.
I think we can't, I think we can't say it when we own name, I think we can't do, do that, I mean, that was kind of the benefit of getting ahead of it, but I think. It's so complicated to do, but. I, I think if we're, if we're not distinguishing developable area, we can't talk about what happens in the open space area. I mean, we know Jacob's gonna keep farming, but I, I think we're, we're just not.
I guess just. Let me know what your, what the, the motion is, um, cause I, I shouldn't, I don't wanna put words in.
I.
Right.
I, okay, I'm still proposing to strike it all together, because I just don't see how we're. We're limiting him to only.
Cause your motion is that, is there, is do, is there any not acknowledgement though of the five acre lot? Um, in terms of.
Well, now you can't exceed four.
Right.
So.
But let's say the zoning changes in the future to two acre minimums.
Oh, so I don't know how to do, okay, so I think done with my motions, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, you can. You just gotta leave it at that.
Yeah, now it's for discussion.
Well, is there a second on, on this, so do you wanna?
Okay, wait, could you read the, um?
Review it all again?
Well, no, just, just read the motion.
I don't know if to.
Sorry, I'm just gonna give it this, cause I think that's true.
Yeah.
You need to blow that up, Scott.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay, that should be better.
I know I said to do this, but now that I'm looking over, I don't know that we need to remove. Eleven, where it says the cluster subdivision process may be used, I think actually probably makes sense to do that, and then we just get rid of the N, because then we're talking about.
Yeah, thi- this language was specifically taken from the cluster of development rights. Section of the zoning law, which is about clustering of all the rights, so it's.
Yes, just.
Probably should be in there.
Should be referenced, you mean?
But this one, it says. Must show a build and no build area, I think that, I think just really the first part.
Okay, let me, that's your motion, let me just. I want to hear this, that.
Yes.
Can you take over?
You trust me, I'm sure.
I'm really sorry.
You, you were supposed to start to be gone.
I would. Right, yeah.
We'll make it work.
Right.
This is gonna be a short.
We have.
I know, one application, no such thing, and I was like, we did some work on this.
Yeah, it's.
We have four arms still.
Yeah.
This is where.
You have five.
We're at the point of leading a dead horse.
Yeah, yeah. Somebody has to sustain.
Like, okay.
So, call me and I'll rush back for two.
Yeah, that's.
No, we.
I. I find the. The one that I didn't sign over.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we're done with my motion, I'm sorry that it's so funny.
No, we see the bottom resolve. Well. Resolve. But there's one under that, isn't there?
So one more line? No.
Oh, okay. Could you just go up, I think just ten?
Yeah, I think that's.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll say, could you just? Never mind.
Any discussion?
Yeah, now.
There we go.
Now that I motioned it, I want to discuss it, do we need stronger language around the, like, the idea of credits, the.
I think it should be, it should, it should, you should be clear about where, for the platnotation part. It should be clear about where these are going, and so. So to say. No more subdivisions on the five acre lot. And up to four more on the, I mean, you, you have it here with dwellings attached and detached, not to exceed four in total, um, you could say. And lots.
Yes, cause it's.
Not to exceed four.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and, and this could be on the, as I said, on the parent parcel. And then on the, um. I mean. I'm just gonna call it the five acre parcel.
Mm-hmm.
They could use the five credits, Sarah, though, instead. For the four credits.
At.
Cause.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, cause that's the best.
But. I didn't hear any proposal from Jake about that. Keep it all apparent.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. But it can be either, I mean, they could divide it either, so we're just, okay.
The owner could say. I have these many credits, here's how I wanna do it, and then, and then the planning board then.
Has to go through them.
Agree or not agree.
Okay.
So.
But once the applicant sells that lot, he loses his credit, so I, I can understand why you'd keep them. In the parcel.
Okay. That's where they are, alright. Cool.
Any more discussion on this? Certainly, this is, so this is a time where amendments can be made to these resolutions, you say, you know, I move, and you can sort of. Sort of nest your motions and seconds and discussions into the main discussion point, um. If, if you felt like you weren't agreeing with this, you wanna make a motion, you know, amend it, not. By, you know, I'm not sort of suggesting that, just that this is the time to, there's a motion on the floor into second, right, so you second.
Yes.
Yeah, and it, that, you know, it's. Right, so you seconded, yeah, and it, that, you know, it's nearing ready for a vote on it. And if you're feeling uncomfortable about it, or wanna keep discussing, maybe this is the time to be in that, or not.
I mean, I, I missed last week, so I'm sorry, but I, I just don't understand why this is a cluster anymore, if you're able to subdivide the parent parcel into four lots. Why isn't that just a BZI? Project now, where you just are trying to stub off five acres? Am I missing something important?
No, no, you're not, and this, so this was asked, um, I, I asked this of the planning board in January or December, one of the very early months, I said. This could go to the, the BZA, this could be, you know, good vehicle, a variance could be, you know, an appropriate measure for this. Um. Or the planning board could do what it did a couple of weeks ago, and for that, our band Nelson wrote, considered a cluster. And I heard from the planning board that it was willing to make a big, big coastal subdivision.
But that's why we went down the route of developable area and all of that, cause we thought that there were gonna be. An actual cluster, you know, and now we could have just a five acre lot and then four big parcels. So I, I, I just don't know why cluster applies here anymore.
Yeah, I won't look at me, I look at you, really, seriously, this is on the planning board to, to figure this out on.
Yeah, and I, I, as you've noticed, I've been trying, making the same point. But I think, uh, for this case, this time, we still get some open area, which we wouldn't get with, with the variants. For, you know, some open area delineated, and. So I, I really support it, even though I certainly understand that, that, you know, strictly speaking, and. The caveat is that we got a committee working on, on, so this won't hap- happen again. So, so, yeah. And we, so, so that we do get the open space, which we would, yeah.
I'll just say, we might see one before the committee makes any decision.
No, God.
Move it to the, to town.
I quit. You beat me to it.
The, the reality is, is that people, especially the generation of farmland.
Yeah.
Are, can't afford it anymore, and they're looking for buyers, and those buyers cannot afford ten acre lots.
Yeah.
Right.
I hear it multiple times a week, it cannot afford them. Um, and, and they're priced out, so. People, I've.
And we don't wanna do that.
Uh, I was, so we're going to see another one here very shortly, um, from generational farm family, and they're gonna propose smaller lots. And they're gonna propose a cluster subdivision. Um, they asked me to keep their name in confidence for now, um, but just. Uh, so if, we, we will see this again, um. And it's, it is important to talk about, I know it's taken six months to talk about, and it's frustrating for everyone and all, um. You see that there's a wide range of things that you can do, and I think that's the frustrating thing, is that it's not like you need to do A or B, it's, you could do. A through, you know, Z on this one.
I think if we write the new ordinance. Better. I could visualize where it's, it's pretty straightforward, what to do with each situation, I really think that's possible.
I still, I still think what, what Greg is sharing is something I've heard too, is. I think that we need to think about that, and, and what does.
This, we're.
Having more, I mean, in lots of ways, more of. People moving in. Is helpful.
And affordable, affordability is.
There's no way people can get what it is.
Right. And I do think that going through this will help, but I think we also have to use this as a guideline, I, we can't go like. Totally the opposite direction for the next one, if it's pretty much asking the same thing, then we can't just be like, no, not for you.
Yeah, right.
Um, but I think we're setting precedent, now I think we know what we're gonna follow. Yeah. So.
Yeah, it's gonna continue to come up with nuances, probably.
Oh, yeah, no, there'll be a little.
And, and I think that. For us, it's gonna be a process that's not gonna be straightforward. Because there's a lot of nuances.
Yeah, it's true.
And I think the water issues is an interest, interesting thing over a period of time. So. I think we. We're, we're gonna need to accept that it's going to be tricky. And take some time.
Yeah.
And we will try to get it the best we can, but we can only do the best that we can in the moment.
And trying to follow.
And follow the, yeah.
We, we will do better, though, with the language, we can do way better with the language of the ordinance.
My feeling is that he has the development rights, and I think that the town set this zoning in the ten acre lots to control and calm. The sprawl, really, and calm down density, so. We're not getting more houses than we would otherwise.
Right.
And the smaller, if people, we do just keep chopping off five acre parcels, in my opinion. Then we're by default, it's protecting open space, which I think is a goal, so. That's kind of my thinking, and I, again, if, if the developable area that is on the parcel wasn't in that six hundred. The thing, it, it might be easier to look forward. Forward with it and play with it a bit more, but there are, it's, it's very unknown, like, we don't have. You know, he doesn't have four houses lined up, or three, it'd be. We can do three more houses, yeah, I'm just. Um, so I think, without knowing that, I think we need to move forward with what we have, cause I, this applicant does have the right to. Please subdivide some of them. Um, and, yeah, it's definitely confusing, cause it's not.
And we can't change what already happened, we can't tell the ones that are across the road to go away.
Right.
There. So we gotta figure out how to do the best decision based on. Current.
And helping keep stuff agricultural as possible, too, that somebody.
Self-funded.
Yeah, like their farm, you know, that's how you say it, like, with the people selling off the parts, it'd be nice if we could help. Make it developed where they can keep the part of, start with the amount that they can farm, farm. And then sell also the lots for people that can buy them, and also still be able to afford the farm, because you're. You know. You, you pay less taxes and stuff, or whatever, so. Definitely, I think that's, at least for me, kind of gonna be one of the guiding principles, too, it's like, how do we keep. As much farmland farm as possible, but what else, and making it where. They can have, we can have more people, too.
And I'm not, I'm definitely not an expert on aquifers and the water issues, but I think that's something that. That would be helpful to know, I mean, not having lots and lots of houses all together in one spot, probably isn't helpful. Where there are. Where the water is. Less plentiful. Or do we really know that it is? I think it would be interesting to find out what we could about. That. Going forward.
Yeah, but. Danny did that, that aquifer study, um, for the. For the buttermilk creek watershed, number of years ago. Um, groundwater is a tricky, tricky subject to understand, because there are, I think Kelly said pockets, it's almost anything from the pockets. There are. Uh. There's people that have to drill deep wells, and then next door, somebody got water gushing out of the ground, um.
Yeah, we had a guy in, uh, uh. Geologist, oh, six, eight years ago, that talked, and so we started pressing him on, okay, so how do you. Know if there's gonna be water, and it said, we just, we just don't know what's down there, it's just too hard to know. He did say. This is really interesting, this is a light thing, so. He said. That he knew when the rain fell. That is now in the well. Somewhere around here, our well here, or over at the school, he said he knew when that rain fell, and it was in nineteen fifty-three. How did he know that?
What?
Cause it. He knew when the rain fell, that ended up being eventually drawn up. They.
Where the school is.
Pardon?
Where the school is, you're saying?
Yeah, the school or here, they could tell from the, uh, radioactive, radioactive level of the water. That they were pulling up, because there was different levels, they used to have, uh, nuclear bomb testing. Back in the fifties, and they could actually tell that. Great. A little.
Doesn't wanna make him not gonna drink the water.
Well, this is gonna be a totally different. Water at the school.
That fascinating, no? It's incredible.
With that property.
We have to think of.
Anyway, let's go.
Yes, is there any further?
Well, you guys. Have to know that.
Uh, I'm listening to you, cause we were bringing up concerns about this, but. And any.
We already have a second, so. Any more discussion before we vote? Did somebody suck it? Yeah, I'd already done that. So now it's either. Take a vote or keep talking, so. I'm ready.
Do you have more questions? Cause you said you, okay.
I don't think they're answerable.
Well, I think some of this isn't answerable, for sure.
I mean, you know. You can make a, you can make a motion for an amendment, if you felt strongly about, there was a defined area. I'm not trying to open that whole thing like that, but just.
No, I'm gonna defer to others on the board, I think. I, I. Trust everybody's opinion.
Okay. So, ready to vote?
Second. Alan.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Scriber.
Yes.
Vanucci.
Yes.
Bergman.
Yes.
That passes. Um. So Jake, I'll follow up with you on what we need. And changes to that plat in terms of notations, and, um. Yeah, I'll, I'll follow up an email to you about what we need for that, and printing it out, I mean, two copies, it's getting signed by Kelly. Luckily, her office is right next to T G Miller, so, um, but I'll follow it, and we'll give you about next steps. Okay, in terms of the agenda, I mean, that's it for development review, I, I don't, I can give a little plan to report, um. So we are. We are soliciting engineering firms, um, for the sewer project, so you know, there's this sort of budding. Sewer projects with this large grant, so we're waiting for, uh, some responses from sewer, some sewer firms, and engineering firms. To start walking the town through the process of creating sewer districts. Um, that will be a very telling process about. Uh, about whether the town is gonna, you know, sort of. How successful they are, and, and. Um, seeing that vision through, um. So. We are waiting for that, there will be, that would probably get. Those firms who get engaged, I think, that firm we get engaged likely in June, if we do get a response, just do this Friday. Um. The town board asked me last night to look into applying for a new CDBG, uh, grants this year. For public facility mobility improvements, so this town hall here specifically, um. And so I'll be looking at applying this year for improvements to the town hall's mobility, um. It's in the federal administration, actually, the, the president's budget to eliminate CDBG. Um, for the following year, which is extremely unfortunate, um, and pretty short sighted, and. Lots to say about that, but, uh, so we might as well look at CDBG this year while, while it's still there. Um. And working with the regulatory review committee, uh, we will likely be. Oh, what I should do actually to the board next time is summarize to you some of the recommended changes. The, the changes that have been recommended by the committee have all been focused on the Hamlet Center and Hamlet Neighborhood Zone districts, in the thought it's a then. Once those are complete, pass those to the town board, so probably in the next month or two, those will go to the town board for consideration. Um, and then there's some other changes that other, that's like Scott, and there's a subcommittee working on it with, so there's clustering and housing, um. And I'll just leave it at that for right now. Do, you wanna adjourn the meeting, or?
Sure. Meeting adjourns. So.
Greg. I, can I get Phil's phone number? I, can I get Phil's phone number?